We'll call a special meeting of the county board, April 30th is the order. And rise for the...
..................................................................................................................... Okay, twenty present, one excuse. Motion to present the agenda.
So.
Second by Mark Byers. Got that?
No, I'm sorry.
Mark Biller.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's passed. Correspondence? There is none? Any public comment?
Good morning. League of Women Voters is here. Victoria Serenich and Barb Groll. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
Oh, there is. Okay.
Hi, Dan.
Hi.
Good morning. Sarah Bryan, local sixteen fifty-eight. I asked me, local officer and steward for the courthouse unit. I would just like to make a couple of comments regarding the two thousand fourteen employee handbook. We would appreciate if the county board, if you have any questions regarding our current contracts, to approach one of us, whether it be email or phone call. We will provide you with any information that you would need. I guess what we're asking respectfully, if the county board members would actually compare our contracts to what the two thousand fourteen employee handbook mirrors. Not only are the employees losing their fiscal and financial decreases regarding insurance and potential wage loss due to the comparability study, but we're also losing the standard rights regarding seniority bumping. Other counties in Wisconsin have worked with the union units and have actually passed resolutions to protect some of the collective bargaining. I guess we're frustrated that we were never approached to do a roundtable discussion between, you know, the county board and union reps. We would have liked to see that happen. Dane County right now is in the process of doing a labor management agreement, and I guess we would like to have seen, you know, us working together instead of the employee handbook, you know, being produced behind, you know, closed doors. We would have liked to have some say and work with the county board in respect to this employee handbook. Unfortunately, a lot of employees were afraid to attend this meeting to speak up, so, you know, I'm trying to replace some of the workers with the concerns that they do have after reviewing the proposed handbook online that was available last Thursday. And we're just asking you to, if you could please, if you have any questions regarding what our contracts say and what the employee handbook says, just to approach either myself or the other union officers, our staff rep is also here today, Mark Delorme. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Is there any supervisor response? Ken?
Yeah, seriously, there's a point I was going to bring up, and I won't respond now, but I did have a question for Grant when we start.
Okay.
That is going to pertain to her concerns.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, special reports, we don't have any. There's no pending business. We're going to go to resolution two thousand thirteen thirty-three, approval of tower space lease agreement. Joel, you want to make a motion and then explain it?
Make a motion to bring resolution two thousand thirteen thirty-three forward.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mark. You want to explain it?
I'll do my best. Is Tim here at all by chance? Probably not. I guess what this is, and to bring everybody up to speed, we're aware that we're moving forward with the FEMA grant application with Sister Bay Liberty Grove, and that's going to involve a lot of work on the towers in the northern half of the peninsula. And I think this is just basically to formalize our long-range agreement with Cellcom to co-locate equipment on the towers for up-and-coming projects that are in the CIP for funding and miscellaneous items. So, it's basically just to, again, to formalize our long-range plan so nothing changes in the short term with equipment on all the towers for emergency services.
Okay. Grant, you got anything?
No, that's the sum and substance of it. It memorializes what has long been the status quo, as Cellcom has allowed us to have equipment on their towers and in their accessory structures, free of charge. This perpetuates that situation for the next five years, and thereafter, we'll see where we go.
Okay. Marine, you got anything? Any other questions? Biz?
Yeah, I'm just curious, do they need space or much space in a building for their equipment? I know they want to go up on the tower, but sometimes they need equipment in a building.
I think it's miscellaneous equipment to put for the microwave stuff that will be added, so minimal stuff, but...
Which one are we talking about this?
On Washington Island.
Oh.
No, I think, I mean, this pertains to all of them that the county uses. So, it's not isolated to just one. There just happens to be one up there as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I should note that there are four separate agreements addressing towers in Gibraltar, Jacksonport, Washington Island, and Chambers Island. I have reviewed all four of the agreements, and I believe they are acceptable as drafted. If you deem fit to adopt this resolution, we will be asking that Chairman Osted sign each agreement, and we'll forward them to Cellcom for signature.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Hugh?
I just had a minor one for Grant. Is there some sort of provision in the leases that would, so you don't get down to year five and all of a sudden we get into a big fight over, is there like a three-year, after three years, they have to notify us if they're going to discontinue or anything like that?
It's not three years. It's, I believe, ninety days. I don't have the agreements in front of me. There is a time period. But what we anticipate is that we will be working with Cellcom, and quite frankly, probably some other providers that have towers in Door County to make sure that our needs are met. We hope it doesn't come down to that, that we're worried about the eleventh hour and being booted off their towers. But based on past history, they've been, Cellcom especially, has been extremely cooperative with the county, and I would anticipate that we'll be able to work something out to either remain on their towers or come up with some sort of alternative arrangement after the sixty-month period expires.
Can Cellcom, as an entity, just be bought out by AT&amp;T or something? Would these agreements continue forward or not?
Correct. These agreements continue to any successors or signs of Cellcom. In terms of the county, we do not have similar rights. We could not assign our right to be on their tower to anybody else that's union to the county.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we'll go to our voter board, vote her up or vote her down. Ready?
They're voting ready.
That has passed on a vote of twenty yes and one absent. Next item is, there are no ordinances. We're going to go to the new business, the health insurance design changes, and we'll turn it over to Marine.
Excellent. Thank you. In your packets, you all have my monthly report, which basically outlines where Door County is. We have finally the ability to implement the tools that were given to us as part of Acts ten and thirty-two, were adopted on June twenty-ninth of two thousand eleven. We have at present seven-year-long labor agreements with our labor unions, which we will honor through December thirty-first of two thousand thirteen. So, the items that are before you today on both health insurance and the employee handbook will take effect on January first of two thousand fourteen. So, and we will be spending, once you approve the health insurance changes in the employee handbook, we will be spending the remainder of the year educating our employees about these items as they affect them. So, there will be meetings with employees through the remainder of the year, but we will stress that they don't, the meetings do not interfere with the existing labor agreements. They are indeed in place through December thirty-first of two thousand thirteen. So, I think the key to this is that the recommendation that's before you on health insurance was put together by your management team, which includes myself, Corporation Counsel Thomas, Finance Director Scholish, and Human Resources Director Handy, with the assistance, and this is the health insurance piece, with the assistance of Rayanne Bodry. Rayanne is exceedingly well-respected in health insurance circles, and she assisted us, at least on the health insurance piece. So, she's here today to give you the overview of what we've been doing the last couple of months, and I think at that point, I'll turn this over to Rayanne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county board, and Ms. Murphy. Thank you for having me this morning. Before we get to the information in your packet, I just want to say how honored and pleased I've been to be working with the Risk Management and Insurance Committee of the county board, along with the management team described by Ms. Murphy. We've been working on this project since approximately late summer of last year. So, what the whole goal was, was to design a program that would be comparable to the counties and cities and other team-type approaches, businesses that are in the local area, to make sure that your county staff and the retirees were not adversely impacted to such an extent that we couldn't attract and retain employees furthermore. We also wanted to study everything that had happened with the county thus far. Were we in the right type of funding mechanism? Was it important to stay self-funded? Or should we explore and look at becoming fully insured? Some of those decisions, I will say, we've gone through multiple times. There were various studies. Every time I would leave a meeting of the Risk Management and Insurance Committee, I left with various assignments, and I would come back. We in insurance like to use a lot of acronyms and kill a lot of trees, and they've got more folders from the Horton Group, as well as some insurance studies than they probably ever anticipated having. But the reality is that being self-funded, and quite frankly, this county has done a phenomenal job, even in adverse times, with maintaining an adequate reserve to fund the claims and the administration and fulfill the county's needs and requirements. They've been able to adequately reserve and been unfortunately unable to be terribly flexible with the plan design, but now we'll be able to design a program that's unique to Door County, but yet meets with all of the details in respect of your comparables. That's very difficult to do when you're fully insured. We pretty much have to accept what the market gives to us, and we can flex it a little bit, but they usually are not going to custom-design for a group of this size. Roughly, the county has on its plans about two hundred and twenty-one to two hundred and thirty people annually, so we don't have every active employee on the board. The other thing, coincidentally, which no one could have anticipated, but having that flexibility moving into two thousand fourteen also coincides directly with the full implementation of federal healthcare reform, or the PAPACA Act, Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. Being self-funded gives us the opportunity to avoid several of the taxes and fees associated with being fully insured. So, the taxes and fees are still onerous. They're still in that bill, but the reality is, being self-funded gives us the maximum flexibility. So, now I'll move to the work of the risk management team and the recommendations. If anyone has any questions about anything I said as an introduction, I'd be happy to meet with you separately or to discuss it with you at a member of the, at a meeting of the risk management team. So, if you look at page nine and ten of seventeen, that came in your monthly report. We appeared before the Risk Management Committee in January, and at that time, it was suggested we would forward and bring to that committee some ideas for a strategic plan that would be presented to the workforce in July. This was in anticipation of the end of the current collective bargaining agreements. It was also in anticipation of the need to send requests for proposal out to the self-insurance market, particularly with regard to any changes we would make. Your stop-loss, your specific deductibles, and the insurance we pay for on an aggregate basis are very much determined by, the premium levels for that are very much determined by the plan design that's going to be in place. So, when a stop-loss carrier looks at the county, they want to make sure at what point and what kinds of strategies are in place to make sure that people go in-network, to make sure that people are using the correct behaviors in utilizing health insurance, to make sure that it's both cost-effective and that it actually heals and betters their conditions, as opposed to just we constantly use healthcare. So, it is important to have these things out and kind of decide it on pretty early in the year so that as we go to market, as we go to educate employees, we know how to tell our third-party administrator exactly what they need to do and how they need to do it, so that we can match employee education with how the plan is truly going to be administered. We agreed at that time to show the committee what program the planned benefits would look like that would save money off the current budget. So, initially, what I was asked to do very early in the year, obviously, January of two thousand thirteen is a difficult time to project what the rate increases might look like for January two thousand fourteen. We didn't even have any claims in for the two thousand thirteen plan year. Using a normal underwriting tool, we did look at a retrospective study and do a projection forward. We assumed at that time that we would be looking at a rate increase of at least six percent, which is roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that we would need to save at least that amount to bring the budget to flat for health insurance, as well as an additional six percent savings if it could be achieved fiscally responsibly. So, the things that we looked at is premium contributions. First and foremost, the county currently has various groups paying varying amounts toward their health insurance premium contribution. For the collective bargaining groups, this has been, in general, lower than most of the state, particularly since post-Acct ten and thirty-two. But for the non-collectively bargain groups, the non-represented, they've been paying significantly higher than your comparables throughout the state, or roughly at around fifteen percent. Also, their plan is slightly different, and they pay more out-of-pocket than the plan we're going to be discussing, which is Plan B, your current Plan B, which is the plan that the majority of the employees have today. So, one of the things that we also discovered as we were looking at the premium contributions is that the county was currently placing money into a Section one twenty-five or tax-advantaged account for people that would do certain activities, mainly take the health risk assessments and do a biometric screen, basically a blood draw. The county participation in that, although favorable, better-than-average without any, with an incentive, is significantly lower than it's been over time. One of the recommendations by Horton to the committee was that we would take a look at no more, for instance, free money. Basically, if people wanted to perform those activities, we wanted to incentivize them through a reduction in their premium contribution. So, our ultimate goal was to have everyone at the fifteen percent level as a starting point, and then, should they perform those activities of the health risk assessment and a biometric screen, same one that's available today, we would actually reduce that premium contribution to twelve point eight percent, or the state average. Why would we look at a reduction? Quite frankly, it's only a reduction for a few. It's still an increase for some, and yet, what we want is the data. The data point gives us a starting point for assessment of the county's healthcare and health insurance needs overall. If we don't have that data, we don't know what kind of wellness programs to put any kind of teeth behind or any of our financial and fiscal resources. A foolish thing, for example, would be to start a smoking cessation program if less than one percent of the county employees and their spouses smoke. So, we want to make sure that we know what people need in terms of wellness, coaching, activities, and different variables before we go ahead and put more money into that program. We also know what that program is expected to cost. So, Ms. Schalisch did do a projection on that, and I think we're looking at saving approximately a hundred thousand dollars with just that change in our program strategies. And that includes giving people that reduction in their payment. We also made, in February of this year, we made a network change. We currently have health payment systems as a PPO overlay. We were looking at replacing Healthy OS Plus with Trilogy. That saved us an additional hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, and there was visibly no disruption in the employee access for the providers they had been using. We also had what's called a laser on our stop-loss for two thousand thirteen. A laser is when the stop-loss carrier takes everyone else at the county-specific deductible, literally every plan member, at seventy-five thousand, except for one or two individuals, sometimes it's not just one, that have a known medical condition. What most people don't know is that stop-loss insurance is not health insurance by definition. It's property casualty or reimbursement. They don't like to buy a claim. So, what stop-loss insurance is typically designed to do, quite frankly, is like flood insurance for your home. Once your home is flooded, it's a little bit harder to get insurance, or you might get a different deductible if you would have another flood, for example. That's kind of what a laser is. This laser is no longer going to be on the plan in two thousand fourteen. That will save the county an additional two hundred thousand dollars. We also looked at what the county was doing for prescription drugs. And while you have a very conservative prescription drug program on its face, the co-pays are exactly where they should be, everything is running very, very smoothly and strategically designed to put people into the right drug categories, what's behind the scenes and what is no longer available in the market at all is that we had a co-pay maximum for both our non-represented and our represented groups. And that co-pay maximum meant that once I spent a hundred dollars as a single individual or two hundred dollars as a family, I was done paying for prescription drugs for the remainder of the year. So, while our co-pays were designed to strategically align people with the right drug categories, generic, for example, over brand name, if I'm a smart consumer and I want to use the brand name, two to two and a half months of a brand name co-pay would get me out of, I would hit the co-pay maximum, and my family would be done. Simply removing that co-pay maximum is going to save the county sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. So, we will be removing the co-pay maximum, and the drug co-pays will stay as they are The plan is no longer grandfathered as of January first, two thousand fourteen. It would not have been even if you had not lost your collective bargaining agreements at that time. So, that would mean that all of the provisions of the Affordable Care Act, healthcare reform, the PAPACA Act, however you want to call it, all of those will come into play. So, what that means is even as we look to increase deductibles and out-of-pocket expenditures for the employees, something that hasn't been done in over seven years, the reality is, is every item that is age and gender appropriate for preventive care, so, for example, for the men, this would be your prostate antigen tests, your blood tests, your annual physicals, all of that. For women, your pap smears, mammograms. For those of us that are of a certain age now, it's colonoscopies, as long as all those things are preventive. For your children, their immunizations. Those are going to be covered at a hundred percent for the employees, including those contraceptives that are part of the Affordable Care Act. No out-of-pocket for them at all. So, we are heavily incentivizing, through both the plan and the health risk assessment, people to get their preventive health screens. It's really important that they do that. Again, we want to get early detection here to offset some of those large claims we've had. We are going to, then, in number six, we're splitting the dental administration off, moving that to a carrier that actually may have a network of dentists that agree to accept lesser charges. We've had Delta Dental and MetLife run the claims. We're looking at roughly about a twenty percent reduction in costs just for simply moving the dental. We're looking at changing the wellness programs. I talked to you briefly about that in terms with the premium contribution, but also, once this data is in place, one of the supervisors, Supervisor Meyer, has been very instrumental in asking us through the committee to move this forward once we know what direction, to, I guess, bring it up to a more sophisticated level and make sure that the wellness program is actually actionable and changes and grows in a prudent manner so that we can actually keep our members healthy. We want to keep the well-well, and we also want to move those that are less than healthy into a better position to have any information they need at their fingertips and to know where they can go to get viable resources. Lastly, in your packet, you will have all the comparables, in fact, even some of them that are probably not what you would have considered your comparables in the past. These are going to be those that are used moving forward, and they're all in your packet for you to note. So, these are changes before we even get into health plan design that we're looking to save us at least three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if not just a little bit more. So, as we move forward in the recommendations, keep that in mind, that we've also, we've already taken the majority of any risk that we thought we were going to have against an increase off the table before we started messing with plan design. Any questions? Yes?
Yeah, the comparables in number eight that you select are all other counties. Are you ever going to compare anything to the private sector in this area?
We did ask several of the private sector entities, and if it wasn't published, they were not necessarily willing to share it.
And if I could, if I can, can I? All right. One of the reasons why we chose to look at these comparables for healthcare was, these are the same comparables we're going to be looking for, the compensation study that we're currently doing with Whipley. So, there is some consistency across both what we're offering for healthcare and what we're offering for salaries, because our folks generally might not go to, for example, an administrator might not turn into a CEO of a small company with three hundred and fifty employees, or a paramedic doesn't have a like job that they would do in the private sector, although the paramedics and the deputies are kind of out of that because they'll continue to collectively bargain with us, because remember, there's a public safety exemption. Some of these positions that we have, they're just simply aren't comparables in the private sector. So, what we're really focusing in on is, where would our employees, in all likelihood, go to work? And it would be those county comparables. So, it's for consistency across both the compensation and the healthcare. And also, when we looked at employee handbooks, we also looked at what other counties were doing. So, there is a little bit of a difference between the private sector and the public sector world. Something to think about. And we will look at this annually. At this place, at this point, because we're making such dramatic changes across those three sectors, the pay, the health insurance, and the work rules, we thought it appropriate to stick with the county comparables for now. We did look at some other comparables at a committee level. We looked at City of Surgeon Bay. We looked at Ministry Healthcare. We looked at Southern Door. But really, where our employees, nine times out of ten, are going to go to look for other jobs are going to be within those counties. Sufficiently answered the question?
Okay. Hugh's got a question.
Sure, I really have two questions. One is, maybe I missed this. If this were to pass, and I assume it will, would this be both for representative, would this be across the board for everyone in the county? In other words, there won't be two tiers anymore?
No. There will be two tiers, because we have six labor agreements.
No, no, I'm talking about...
Four, four of which are going to end at the end of December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. So, we will move from just myself and Grant and Lori Holtz, for example, are all non-represented employees. Joining us will be Sarah, Donna, those folks that were here earlier. They'll be joining us in the non-represented ranks as of January one, two thousand fourteen, who will stay represented, and this is under current state law, are the deputies and the paramedics.
Right.
They will continue to be represented, and we will continue to collectively bargain with them. So, as the, I think there's going to be a negotiating committee meeting in May. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to go into the details, but we will be offering a separate, as allowable under state law, a separate plan design at the table. And I think beyond that, I'm getting into an area that the corp council is going to look up at some point and tell me we shouldn't go into in a public meeting.
Okay, I understand that.
So, there'll be two plans.
I have a question. I have a question for anybody here. There's certain positions that you take, and as an example, Joel has to take a physical every year.
Every other year to run the ferry, right?
Yep. Can we just insist that people go in for preventive healthcare, that they go in and take a checkup every year? I mean...
Well, some members of the private sector are absolutely doing that. They're saying this is a condition of eligibility. I will say that that hasn't been the standard. The other challenge with making that a condition of eligibility is it isn't a traditional wellness plan. The only difference between that, obviously, a physical, a full-blown physical is where we would want every employee to be, and the plans will absolutely pay for that. The reason for asking for the health risk assessment and a separate biometric screen is so that that data can be aggregated. We know what, again, the entire county, when we do one snapshot glance, what our top five considerations are here, not just Joe's top five. So, we need to know, and we don't want to know what Joe's top five are. We want to know what the county as a whole can do to affect behavior that will change the wellness line of the county staff members and their families.
And if I could, I'm looking at Mark Delorme as I say this. Those two hundred or so employees that are about to lose their status, they may still collectively bargain, but it will be for base wages if they determine that it's appropriate to keep their union. So, they will go from an agreement of about a thirty-page document that covers work rules, health insurance, retirement, and wages, to, if they agree, they have to vote to keep their union, to a single-page document that will have base wages, and that in and of itself is covered under state law. So, let me make that clarification. If they choose to keep their unions, the only thing they'll be bargaining is base wages. So, that would be beyond the public safety, but we don't know what our employees are going to do. Sorry for that interruption. Sorry for that interruption. We should probably get back to the health insurance item.
Before I go into the recommend, sorry.
In regard to the dental care, is that restricted, or can the employee see the dental doctor of their choice?
They'll be able to continue to see the dental doctor of their choice, or the dentist, or pediatric dentist, whatever they may need. The, what, the reason for the change, though, is that Delta, for example, as a national carrier, has agreements with a lot of the dentists that aren't restricted to simply a preferred provider option like we have within the medical. But basically, what they say is they won't balance bill the patient for anything that Delta says is over usual customary and reasonable. And those discounts, if you will, are really going to help both the employee or the family member, as well as the county, because my maximum's going to go a lot further. I'll be able to get much more of that crown paid, for example, because I have that 20% off, and it helps the county's claims. We have a pretty, a pretty stable group for dental, and our claim cost hasn't varied widely over time. But as we all get a little bit more mature and we start looking at what's going on here, the incidence of crowns and a few more high-ticket items are really starting to tick up. So we're seeing a lot more people hit their maximums. This is a very effective way to help manage that without making people change dentists, which is always very invasive and frustrating and a little bit disconcerting, but it also will help both the employee and the county save some money, which is important in this day and age.
Thank you.
Again, before I get into the recommendations, I just have a couple of quick comments. As we go through this, many of you may, at first glance, be wondering why we didn't go any further. And there are really, basically, two very good reasons for that. And I want to put this on the table before we even get into it. The first is that there is a point at which, when you start to increase deductibles to a difficult point for employees, people will restrict their access to care on their own. They'll stop going. We, if we're, if our whole goal here is to have early detection and get people healthy, the whole, the honest reason and rationale here is that we don't want to make them risk not going to the doctor for something serious. We don't want them pill-splitting or not taking their medications because they see it as unaffordable. I also know that as we move forward, this is a big change for most of the county employees. They haven't seen any change in their health insurance for the majority of the employees here in over seven years. This is going to take some education. This is going to take some time to make sure they understand how the world works, how to maximize the coverage that they have. But there is a point at which risk aversion becomes very really tied to a fiscal provision in the contracts. So we want to make sure that we were smart and that we did this and we were fiscally prudent as we did so. We went far enough to meet more than meet and exceed some of the budgetary goals. I also know that we're going to be looking at this, as Ms. Murphy said, on an annual basis. The reality is, is this, most people's health insurance is not going to stay with the same carrier or third-party administrator for the long lengths of time that people have been used to in the past. We're going to have to look at funding in a more very real and lucrative way. And we're going to have to look at, every time people sort of get used to the plan, if you will, we're going to have to look at changing it up. And as our budgetary needs can continue to need to be looked at very prudently, we're going to need to do more and more with that health insurance to keep it cost-effective. So if we do it now, you get that one-time savings, but we'll be back here looking for a rate increase next June or July, and it'll be, albeit on a lower number in 2014, but it's going to be an increase. You only get a one-time pass. So we want to make sure that we can change the plan as people kind of settle in, get used to it, then is a more opportune and important time to change that up. So I wanted to just get into that, to know where the committee's head was coming from as we sort of designed this plan. So first, we gave the county, or Act 10 and Act 32 gave the county the ability to make more significant plan changes, and we wanted this to be a significant win-win for both the county and all the employees, not just some of them. And because you can significantly change the health plan, doesn't mean that you necessarily should. And as I said before, going to the most aggressive plan the first time out of the chute doesn't leave you a whole lot of wiggle room for the next time we have to be discussing this. So the options will be looked at on an annual basis. We will tweak and change as necessary to continue to make the budgetary requirements and to keep this county able to attract, retain, and take good care of their employees and their plan members. So the recommended plan change is going from a 200-single deductible and 400-family to 500-single and 1,000-family. This is in-network only, I'm only talking about in-network. Everything doubles out of the network. We also then are looking to add co-insurance. Co-insurance, from an insurance company perspective, is the biggest bang for the buck, end quote. What I mean by that is when people are paying their costs 10% at a time, they question how they're going to use that, and they can see themselves getting past that deductible. So people spend their own money very differently from how they spend somebody else's. Similar to the prescription drug copay maximums, when somebody pays a deductible and then has 100% co-insurance credit, there's almost, in some instances, there's a race to get through the deductible. That's not what we're looking for here. We wanted to keep the deductible prudently responsible so people could afford it, they could, wouldn't be fearful of accessing care, and we kept the out-of-pocket very, very reasonable. So the way the co-insurance works is the claimant will pay 90%, or, I'm sorry, the insurance company will pay 90% of the claim until the claim hits $5,000. So the employee would pay the deductible, 500, plus an additional 10% of 5,000, which is an additional 500. After that, other than copays, copayments for prescription drugs, emergency rooms, things of that nature, their out-of-pocket has been reached. So they have a safety net or a stop-loss policy in place for them as well. For a family, that doubles. So if I have more than two family members, no one person can be asked to spend more than $1,000, with the exception of copays. But if I have more than two family members, I have six, we can all gang up on that $2,000 out-of-pocket. Does that make sense? Okay. We are also changing the, increasing the physician visit copays from $10 to $20, which is the most common copay on the market today. It's, we're adding the co-insurance in-network. We're increasing the emergency room copay from $50 to $100. This is going to cause a need for some education, because some people think they're going to a walk-in clinic, and it turns out they're being billed for an emergency room. So we need to make sure that we do our homework, make sure which people and places in the area are doing those kinds of billing practices so that we can alert individuals so that they know they won't have to pay that $100 if they go to the right areas. And then we're keeping the prescription drug copayments in the same place, but we are going to add a tier where, once people get past the first or second month of a high-end specialty injectable, they'll need to be ordering it from one place. So that is going to get us some really significant decreases in the cost of our prescription drugs. What some people don't know is those high-end injectables, like the Ambroles for rheumatoid arthritis, the Humira's, for example, some of the others for MS, et cetera, are well over $2,000, $3,000 a month. Any savings on those kinds of prescriptions are really worth it. And so if we can have them go through one provider system where that's possible, some need to be delivered to the physician's office because they are administered there. This is for home self-injectables. We are, we have looked at what happens when the exchanges come into play. And it's important that everyone knows that healthcare reform exchanges will exist in the state of Wisconsin, as told to us by the Department of HHS on January 1st, 2014. Individuals only are allowed to enroll in them the first, at first glance, or very small employers who have dropped their health insurance. So they're getting out of the health insurance business. As we look at this for you, we have to make sure that our amounts, under our plan design, remain what's called, quote, "affordable." And it has nothing to do with what the exchange is charging, by the way. It has to do with what employees make. So we're carefully watching all of those criteria. We're running that study. That will be available to the county board as soon as it's done. We also want to make sure that you're aware that your budgetary change could be drastic. There's a situation in the Affordable Care Act that says, literally, the law states that no spouses have to be covered any longer. So as we look at the law that says, working or non-working spouses, because they have a landing now, which is the exchange. When we no longer cover spouses, and that is not the plan for the county, by the way, because it's all or nothing, you have to cover spouses for everybody, not just the 30 hours or less, folks. So we, that's not our plan, but know that if the private sector starts doing that, and we have individuals that currently waive the county's insurance because they're on their spouse's plan, they could come back to our program. We have to watch our budget for that kind of change. Additionally, Badger Care is going to be changing. The Affordable Care Act changed Medicaid and eligibility for the same very dramatically. While our governor elected not to take the new federal Medicaid money, he is changing the rules for eligibility. So we may have people losing their status under Badger Care, particularly single adults. We are, we wanted to provide, or to look at the opportunity in the future, to provide plan choices to our employees. At this point, it's not prudently or fiscally responsible to do so. Why not? Because we'd be artificially reducing the premium, and quite frankly, we have a budgetary need. We have to get people on one plan to start with so that we know how effective we could be at managing multiple plans. We must maintain an employee benefit program that attracts and retains. So the summary of the changes that we have is on page 13 of 17, and it's a combination of the items on the next page. So we are increasing the deductible, adding co-insurance in-network, increasing the office visit copay to $20 from 10, increasing the ER copay to $100 from 50. We are keeping the prescription drug copays the same, 5, 20, and 35. We're adding a tier for specialty prescriptions and eliminating the out-of-pocket maximum. This is a claim savings roughly of 612, 133. So that, in conjunction with the other changes we talked about, is a little bit north of $1 million, should get us past that 6% increase and have some additional savings over current. There's a lot more detail in your packet that shows you the plan design and the different features from the current Plan B to the recommended plan, as well as how we added up those projected savings and the other considerations. And as I mentioned earlier, your other county comparables are also in there. Can I answer any questions? Otherwise, thank you very much for your time. Yes?
Do we have any coverage on vision right now for the employees?
There is a vision exam for the children under age 18, as required by state statute, but not for the employees.
Is there going to be an option where they can purchase some?
We can certainly look at a voluntary vision program.
Is there any other questions? Hugh?
Yeah, I have a question. When you mentioned the number of people we're covering, it was 212 or 220 or something like that. I forget. And we have 300. So obviously, 80 people, or around the 80 people, are covered under someone else. Have we made any kind of educated guess for that coming this way or not?
Well, the entire, the entire 80, as I understand it, are not necessarily covered elsewhere. So they may not be eligible due to the hours that they work. So there's some differentials in that regard, and we are studying that as we speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time this morning.
Leo, do you want to make us a statement as the chairman of the Risk Management Committee?
Yeah, as a, an item that goes back about five or six years ago. Dan was always the push so far as getting our information together relative to the coverage that we do have. And it stemmed from the idea that at the counter of the Ace Hardware Store downtown, Sturgeon Bay, a question was asked of the walk-in people from outside. If they had any idea as to the dollar amount the County of Door was budgeting on an annual basis for health insurance alone. Dan and I were both wrong. We were less than $1 million. People were coming in all over. There were lots of maximums that had exploded. However, we learned, and we were much surprised to find out that we were already at $3.5 million, heading to something that was almost unheard of. And I'm talking five, six, seven years ago. We were going to be going to a $5 or $6 million thing. So what we did is, I don't remember who the chairman was back there, but we tried, we tried to incorporate that, and we found that we were bumping heads with, no matter where we went, we had other opinions, some of which, if we wanted to jump into it and get the absolute truth, and dollar cost would have cost us a lot of money. So because we had already been in contract with the Horton Group, we just made sure that we were getting something in return for the dollars that we were setting forth. Annually, I believe, we're at about $2,000 a month. Am I correct?
We do have Finance Director Scholish, if you'd like to come to the microphone, to answer the specific questions with regard to the dollar amounts.
I'm just talking about for the advice that we get from the Horton Group. I think we are either in a contract at $2,000 annually. I don't believe we have really used Rayanne in the past to provide the information that she did this time around.
For the sake of the audience, I'm sorry for the interruption, but if it's okay, Finance Director Scholish could answer a yes or a no to your question.
That is correct. Mr. Zipper is correct in his numbers.
Very few times is Mr. Zipper, no. Thank you, Shirley.
Is that your father?
Thank you.
The, it was a learning experience, not only for Dan and I, but we trumped rather heavily on Grant and Shirley, and Kelly came along as well, to find out what we had, where we were going, and what we needed to do. And I'm talking long before Act 10, so don't think that this was any kind of reaction that we were giving to the recent governor's plan. The committee eventually came about and hand-selected members, they were, but they all came with a very good background and with the interests not only of, not trying to avoid you, but, the membership was real good in that they made the meetings, number one. They came prepared with their meeting, with their questions to those meetings, and we were able, through the administrator and others, to get the qualified people to those meetings, give us the information that we needed. Rayanne, as you may have guessed by now, is a qualified expert when it comes to the courtroom, and she brings forward a lot of basic information and is readily absorbed and understood by even those of us who knew nothing about insurance. We had so many items to touch that we don't, we jumped down to health insurance because it was going to be the largest item that we paid. It's the largest cost of the county. I do know that we all are in a boat to say, what about the other insurance? And why don't we farm this out? Why don't we go to the private sector? And on good advice from Rayanne, we are staying with the health to be ours alone. Down the line, we still have others to take a look at. Most recently coming ahead is workers' compensation. And a whole bunch of the townships with the EMTs are coming up with the concerns and just what the hell are we going to do? And they're asking the County of Door for help. Because we're in this thing altogether, especially the EMS and getting the information to them, I think it is perhaps our next item to come up with. The reason why we established this route to provide the information is we wanted to put on video what we could, or as much as we could, as far as the taxpayers in our governmental organization, to let them know what it is that they're, what kind of coverage they are providing and at what cost. And hopefully, we can put in some of the misinformation that's on the street. We are not here to take away anything that may, may have been earned over the years, but annually, the premiums have had to be adjusted. And if we can only And if we can only get the employees or those covered to understand that the premium dollars are adjusted by the use that you give it and take some kind of pride and ownership. A lot of people call this the Cadillac. There are others that wanted it to go back down to a Chevrolet, but somewhere in the process, we had to stop with a Dodge, so. Anyway, we're doing fine. I think eventual, the end will come. We're a better group, a larger group. We'll have some idea of just what kind of coverage we do have and at what cost and what we can do. And I think it's kind of like a give and take and let's see if we can make this work. Budget crunches are not a thing of the past. We are getting to the point at which we looked at something we could do that would not be all intrusive, but as well would bring the same kind of coverage at perhaps a lesser rate and let's both participate in how we do this. The 15% is a pretty good, pretty good price. And I would encourage us that we all become a little bit more familiar with what we have here. I don't expect we're all going to walk out the door and understand what's there. I think Ms. Bryant indicated that it was time to sit down and talk. Well, we do have it in the game plan to come down and explain the design. And it will and have started already with the department heads. And it will continue with the employee management information. There may still be some options. Today, what you have is not the nth result, but it's a starting point. And my recommendation is that we accept what we have heard to this point. Let's move forward. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would say that I'd encourage everyone else to support. I would make a, if it's proper to make a motion. I would make a motion that we bring this forward and through whatever process needs to be accomplished. I do know we have some July 1st items or deadlines to be met. And I think that's a very, be a very good start. And the sooner we get it done, the better off we all be. And I thank them for the time that they put in, especially the members of the committee. I don't know how many realize the work that was done.
Is your motion to consider the recommendations of the Horton Group? Is that?
Yeah.
She's got to write something down. Motion to approve the recommendations of Horton Group?
Two to four, two to four before it's all over, Jill will make everybody look good.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Are there any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote her up, vote her down. Ready? Did you have something else, Huber? That has passed on a vote of 19 yes, one absent and one abstained. So, onward.
Go ahead, Leo. I was going to introduce the group that have been working on the insurance.
Very good.
Roy Engelbert is a member. Mark Farstein. Ben Meyer.
Dave Benigle.
Dave Benigle. And I just happen to be the chairman. I take all the credit for what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to take a break or not? I don't know. We're going to go through the employee handbook and what we're going to do is bring up the management team in the front to discuss the employee's handbook with everybody. I'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you. You ready to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, this is the second piece of the, of a three-part redo of how we relate between management and employees. The health insurance piece, we just take, took care of, at least the nonrepresented piece or the folks that are going to come out of represented to nonrepresented and effective January 1, 2014. This is the second piece, the employee handbook. Third piece, of course, is the compensation study. That's coming later on in the year. The employee handbook piece, this is the macro level document, as I stated in that monthly report to you, that establishes the legal relationship between management and employee. There will be another piece to this. I don't mention that in the monthly report to you, but there is a secondary piece that's coming later on in the year, and that's the administrative manual. That will be handled by our HR director and at that point, we will involve the employees into that process because that's the piece where there will be the hours of work, the, the detail of how we handle PTO, et cetera. The day-to-day operational issues will be in that administrative manual. That's coming a little bit later in the year. This is the key piece that establishes that legal relationship. And really what guides it, I mentioned this in the monthly report, is the Fair Labor Standards Act. We currently have employees that are, that are under that Fair Labor Standards Act, those that are nonrepresented. They are either exempt or non-exempt with regard to the Fair Labor Standards Act. So, without further ado, the gentleman who spent the most time on that, and I use that word very sincerely when I speak of our Corporation Council. He spent many hours developing the employee handbook and he's going to walk us through this today. Thank you.
Well, I guess first off, let's acknowledge what I think Rayanne hinted at and that we all know to be true is that after Act 10 and 32, which is collectively known as the Budget Repair Bill, which was passed back in 2011, there was a dramatic change or departure from the status quo with respect to management labor relations in the public sector. As Rayanne had indicated, because our collective bargaining agreements remain in effect through the end of this year, the provisions of Act 10 and 32 do not apply or did not apply to our workforce until those collective bargaining agreements expire. Within the potential group of employees that we have at the county, there are two general groups. Those are the general municipal employees and then the protected status employees. With respect to the general municipal employees, what is crucial to remember when we go through the employee handbook and more so when the administrative manual is developed and put into place, is the fact that the county is not allowed to bargain with the represented employees except for those that have protective status, protective occupation status, except for total base wages. So, that is, if you take one thing away from the Budget Repair Bill, that should be it. And as I indicated, I don't want to and can't understate the significance of the departure from the status quo. We are no longer held captive by the provisions of the Municipal Employees Relation Act. And there has been a shift at the legislative level in terms of authority and power and discretion from the represented employees to the employer. Having said that, the administrative handbook is the first steps down the path. What this represents, as Maureen indicated, is simply a framework. It is, believe it or not, relatively brief. It contains a whole bunch of information, but is, that is summarized in the 22 or 23 pages. When you put it in context that prior to this, yes?
Grant, I don't mean to interrupt, but I have to ask a question. And this kind of pertains to the comment the employee made before. You've got written here in the first paragraph of this, the introduction, the Budget Repair Bill prohibits municipal employers from bargaining with general municipal employer, employees on matters other than total base wages.
Correct.
Now, if I'm understanding what you're saying, it's illegal for us to bargain with the group, the employees.
Correct. To bargain with the bargaining units, the representative of the employees.
So, we, I thought it was, and if I'm wrong, just tell me. I thought it was that the employees didn't have the right to bargain, other than for base wages.
Correct.
But you're saying we couldn't even, and I'm not advocating it, but just so I understand. You're saying we would be breaking the law if we invited them in for discussion on it even?
No.
If it even perceived that we were including them as part of the team, we would be doing something illegal.
No, there's a distinction and it may only be in the minds of legislators and attorneys between bargaining and meeting and confer. We can still meet and confer with the employees. And now is as good a time as any to address the question that was raised by Sarah. Employers simply don't sit down and discuss what they're going to put in their employee handbook with the employees, not the approach we're taking. As I indicated, this is the legal framework that sets forth how things are going to operate on a macro level going forward. We thought it was appropriate to bring this forward today because this is going to serve as the basis for the administrative manual, which will follow, which will flesh out all the details of the general provisions that are in the employee handbook. What is envisioned from the management team is that we will literally go department by department and talk about the employee handbook and how that is going to take form and take shape in each department through the administrative rules or the administrative, whatever we're going to call it. I think we're undecided right now.
Administrative manual.
Administrative manual. And at that point in time, what we're going to ask the department heads to do, give me a second, is to meet with their employees because that's what really matters, is for the department heads within their department to sit down with their staff with the employee handbook in hand, which is the general overall pictures of what direction the county board wants to go in terms of its relationship with its employees. And what I'm going to stress is you're free today to do whatever you want with this. You can accept it, you can amend it, you can throw it back at us and tell us to start over. But if you approve it, the next step will be to go department by department, develop the administrative handbook and do that through the, through the department heads communicating with their employees at the ground level. That's going to be the most effective way, at least in my estimation, and I think in the estimation of the other three people that were involved in this, to make sure that what we have generally outlined in the handbook can, as a practical matter, be carried out in each department in a manner that is primarily in the best interest of the constituents that we serve and also serves the interest of our employees because we have to remember, and in spite of what you may hear, I certainly understand and the other three that were involved here understand that the employees are the most important resource and we need competent, satisfied employees to carry out the services that we provide to the constituents, Joel.
So, to sum it up in non-legal terms, to honor the request of what Sarah's asking on behalf of the employees, the administrative manual is the point where they would be contacted or could be contacted to provide valuable input, not so much on this particular document.
That is certainly our suggestion.
Thank you.
And if I could, I was remiss in not adding this or beginning my comments with this. This is a document that began with, as you all know, weekly, your administrator, your Corporation Council, your human resources director and your finance director have been meeting to prepare us for the tremendous changes that are going to happen with this organization, January 1, 2014. We've been meeting on a weekly basis. We developed this employee handbook, but we didn't stop there. It was taken to two monthly meetings of the department heads, once a month. All roughly 30 or so department heads within Door County meet. And it was taken, I think, for the first time in March, at the March meeting for review. So, all of the department heads, the 30 or so, the planning director, the human services director, the highway commissioner, all had a look at this back in March. We vetted it, we went through it piece by piece. Some of them even made grammatical changes to it to make sure that what your Corporation Council was working on indeed met with what the standards are. So, there were several changes that were made by those department heads. They vetted it again at an April meeting. Your county clerk was part of those meetings too. So, it's been vetted by your management team beyond just the four. It was vetted by that full management team of 30 or so at two meetings before it's before you today. But this is the first piece that we need to get done before we can move on to that administrative manual, so.
And to further answer Ken's question, I don't want to leave with the impression you can't meet and confer with the employees. We can and we will, but, and this is going to sound terrible, but it's now the reality is the county or the, has the management prerogative to decide how that occurs. And it's no different now than before, under the Municipal Employment Relation Act. Those meet and confers took the form of collective bargaining and the rules that were in existence then. We followed the rules then and we should follow the rules now.
I understand. My point is merely, and I'll say it from my standpoint, how I felt. I always felt like, for myself, I was being held, held for ransom or something by the union. I just didn't feel that they were bargaining with, I'll say, me on a really one-to-one, a fair basis. It was like they had all the power and we just had to listen to them. And I, but things have changed. It's just like going from one party in power to the next party in power. We should all play nice together. I want the employees here to understand, we're not going to treat them like doormats. I mean, they, we say valuable members of the team. We do mean that. They will be well-treated and considered when we make any decisions that we have the right to make at this, from this point on. I don't know if that's, if I'm saying that well enough, but.
That's an excellent point. We talk regularly at department head because we're all, of course, exempt to Fair Labor Standards Act requirements. But we do have folks in this government who are nonexempt. We have, I think we jokingly called her, I'm sure she's not going to want me to say this in this meeting, but that's okay, Lori Holtz, my assistant. She's the poster child for how we treat our nonrepresented hourly employees. We treat them very well because they work very hard. And without Lori Holtz, my office would not function. And all of our employees are valued with that same respect. We, and will be treated very well in the future. But there no longer is a bargaining unit. That's the key, is that we're, we as the management team are expected to manage.
And not to make too fine a point of it, you saw with Rayanne with the health insurance design changes. You will see it with the compensation study and I think you see it with the employee handbook. And we've said this at department head meetings and other places, is just because you can do whatever you want doesn't mean you should. And what, at least I sincerely believe is what the employee handbook represents is a fair and balanced approach to employer, employee relations in the public sector that has been lacking up until now. With that, how do you want to go through this? You want me to go through this page by page? Do you want to just open it up for questions? Or I can give you a general overview of what's in this.
As a suggestion, since I'm sure like many of them, you know, going through this and guilty of not comparing it, not knowing what the changes have been, additions or omissions. So, I would ask maybe page by page, if you can recall what is new, what has been omitted and brief us on that.
Well, maybe to even take a step back, this, I started anew with this, with the Door County Employees Handbook. Ignored Door County's policies and procedures, which is a three-ring binder that's about this thick, that has been added to, never subtracted from for the last 20 or 30 years. And also looked at the four collective, didn't look at the four collective bargaining agreements, but I'm familiar with what's in there. What I did with the employee handbook is with, What I did with the employee handbook is, with the assistance of Maureen, and Kelly, and Shirley, and all the department heads who have reviewed this in its entirety on two separate occasions and have had it in their paws for two months, is create the framework for the way within the state, local state and federal laws of moving forward. So, it's not a matter of what's different between here and there, because I honestly don't think the collective bargaining agreements or, quite frankly, are policies. And procedure manuals are very good starting points because they are based in the pre-budget repair bill world where we were governed by the Municipal Employee Relations Act, which in essence, with very few exceptions, doesn't exist anymore, so. With that, we can start with the first page, which is page three, that has anything of substance on it, and this is really just rote, basic stuff. You will see the fourth paragraph in is the disclaimer, and this disclaimer is peppered throughout the contract, and it's important that everybody understand this because this is one of the legal exposures that we have. If we don't put these disclaimers in here, is the handbook's not a contract. The employees at Door County, with the exception of the protective occupation status, and I only say that one time, we're not talking about those folks, those would be the deputy sheriffs and the EMS paramedics, are effective January 1, 2014, at-will employees, which means quite simply that either the employee or Door County can terminate the employment relationship at any time with or without cause or advance notice. And that can't be stressed enough. Those of you that have operated in the private sector in Wisconsin have known this to be the case forever. Wisconsin is generally an at-will state barring a contract. And what we need to avoid with both the employees handbook and the administrative that's going to follow is to create a contract. The introductions section and effective date and mission statement, again, are just rote. The important parts to take out of those three, it just doesn't take effect until January 1, 2014, and that it replaces and supersedes everything that came before it. And we're, I think the best way to look at this and answer to Joel's question is that we're wiping the slate clean, starting fresh, and you don't get too many opportunities in life or as a business or as a public corporation to do that. And one of the things that we've discussed among the four of us and with the department heads is this really is a unique time in history, and we only have one shot at this, so we will make sure that when we design how the workplace is going to look, how the county is going to interact with its employer, employees, that we take the time to consider what we're doing and, as best we're able, do it right the first time, keeping in mind that the handbook and anything that's related to the handbook is a living, breathing document that we will review from time to time and have the ability to change if it's not working You'll see with the application interpretation, disclaimer intends to form a contract, at-will employment status. It seems silly to repeat this, but we can't stress that enough. Unilateral right to change reinforces that. Moving on to page five flows into management rights. And up through paragraph eight, what we've talked about, I think, in the employee handbook is how the relationship has changed. Starting with paragraph nine, you get into legal mumbo jumbo, the...
Susan, Grant?
Start with Susan.
The at-will employment status on page four, six, you're saying there that it's a policy the employer is not going to enter any contracts, but it's also saying that except that the county board could if they wanted?
Correct.
Is that what that's saying?
Yep. And that's in there because there are circuit court, state and federal decisions that indicate if you put an absolute, "We will never have a contract," that is not appropriate. You have to have a relief valve. And what your best, my best advice to you is that that relief valve be the entire county board and be through, as it says, adoption of a resolution or enactment of an ordinance. So, we're not able to foreclose forever and always under any circumstance that there will be a contract, but what you can do is control the vehicle by which that contract can be formed and memorialized. Ken? And I'll go.
Paragraph B under, we're on page five.
Okay.
Equal employment opportunity, paragraph B. What is carrier status? What does that mean? It says genetic predisposition or carrier status.
With the, what has happened with the decoding, and I'm not a scientist, and excuse me if I'm wrong, it's on tape, and I'll be terribly embarrassed, but with the decoding of what I think they call the human genome, there has been concern expressed regarding discrimination based on somebody's DNA. And let's say that I have, my DNA characteristic shows that I am predisposed to Parkinson's disease, and Door County doesn't want to hire me because I might get Parkinson's disease.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
If I want to back up one step, Grant. If I may ask, what was the overall opinion of the department heads with the document we're looking at right now?
I can let the other three speak up, but we, aside from some tweaking around the edges, we had some healthy discussions and perhaps what I will characterize as fond memories of what used to be but will never be again unless the law changes, the department heads by and large were in agreement with this. There weren't any suggested significant changes. There wasn't a lot of wringing of hands or gnashing of teeth. I think they understand that the, again, the world has changed, and by and large, they are embracing the opportunity to be able to manage the employees within their department versus having to fall back on and be limited, quite frankly, by the collective bargaining agreement.
The only thing I would add to that is that, like you and like our employees, they're anxious to see that administrative manual because that's the day-to-day operational piece. They want us to get moving past this document and move to that next piece where it talks about hours of operation. Because we, quite honestly, are not governed, labor contracts have Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30 as the set hours. They lay out when the lunch period will be, they lay out when the break period will be. That's no longer the case. There is a great deal of flexibility. If we wish to be a seven-day-a-week operation, like our deputies are and like our paramedics are, we could do that across the board. It's not unheard of for governments to consider Saturday hours now because that's what's convenient to our population. So, I think they're like our employees were today, they're probably like many of you are thinking, the devil's in the details, to use a phrase that we all know and love. The detail is coming with that administrative manual, so they want us to move beyond this and move to that next step, when the lady to the right of me is really going to be, her metal's going to be tested the rest of the year as we move into that administrative manual, which Kelly will be in charge of.
Grant, I should ask this question before, when you were talking about that we're not talking about the protective status employees.
Correct.
Didn't the law change that any new hires would be?
With certain exceptions, what we have, and we can go into that briefly, with the protective occupation status, we can start with health insurance. There was just a decision issued by the Court of Appeals that I at least think is precedent setting that indicates that we only have to bargain health plan design, and that excludes pretty much everything but premiums. So, everything else, we're free to set. With respect to the protective status occupation employees' contribution towards the Wisconsin retirement system, we can bargain that with employees that were in place prior to the budget repair bill taking effect, which was, I think, the last day in June of 2011, and then with employees hired after that point in time, they have to contribute to the WRS. So, they did draw a line in the sand. But aside from those few things, the protective status occupation employees preserved rights to bargain were preserved under the budget repair bill, and it would appear, based on the decisions that have come down so far, at least at the federal level, that that distinction between general municipal employees and the protective status occupation employees that the legislature deemed appropriate to make, and the legislation will be upheld by the courts. So, we'll be stuck with two different classes of employees.
Yeah, and the same.
Okay. When you get to page five, what we're talking about, as I said, were the alphabet soup laws. These are things that just have to be in the employee handbook, the affirmative action, the equal opportunity, harassment or anti-harassment. I mentioned other state and federal laws. So, right through page six, paragraph 12, that is, those provisions are in there for the legal protection of the county. If they weren't in there, we would get ourselves in a bind. Moving on to paragraph 13, the creation, classification, combining and elimination of and recruitment and selection for positions, what I've done, and you'll see a theme here, is highlighted the county's expectations, provided sort of a consistent message to the employees, including the department heads, that the county is going to retain discretion with respect to these matters. This is seen throughout that. We don't want to be too vague and too ambiguous where it doesn't make sense, and I hope you agree that this is clear enough, but what we're trying, what I'm trying to get across in this particular paragraph is, in terms of creating positions, classifying positions, combining and eliminating positions, and recruitment and selection for positions, it's at the county's discretion. We talked about what we're going to do generally, which is consistent with what we've done with non-represented folks up to this point in time, but left the door open for discretion, and that discretion may manifest itself on a case-by-case basis, or it may show up in the administrative documents that we're going to be preparing. Because, again, believe it or not, not believe it or not, the reality is that our departments are different. Sometimes even each group of employees within a department are different, and you want to be able to account for those differences and do what's in the best interest of the county generally when you're dealing with these sorts of things. We've also defined employees, moving on to paragraph seven, regular full-time, regular part-time, seasonal and temporary employees. This definition, these definitions are going to become important in the context of healthcare because under the Affordable Care Act, there's something called the 30-hour rule, which I'm not going to get into because it's complicated and, quite frankly, I don't fully understand it. And also, we have some rules with regard to triggering WRS eligibility. And what we want to do ideally is structure our regular part-time employees and our seasonal and temporary employees in a way that's not going to trigger the adverse impacts of the Affordable Care Act and the Wisconsin retirement system eligibility. And what that's going to require is that we pay close heed to the number of hours that these people work, the period of time that they work during the course of a year, and some other things, which we, quite frankly, haven't had to pay too much attention to because this is all, in large part, contained within the collective bargaining agreement, and it was like rolling out of bed in the morning, you did the same thing over and over again. So, this is one of those areas where we can manage, we can be more efficient, and perhaps save the county some funds, some money in this area. Yes?
Okay. I have some confusion with regard to appointed and non-appointed. Is it fair to say that appointed are department heads and everybody else is non-appointed?
Yes, that's a fair characterization. There may be one or two. Use myself an example, I am appointed and confirmed by the county board. I can be removed upon recommendation of the county administrator with an affirmative vote of the majority of the county board. So, that would be department heads, and off the top of my head, I can't think of anybody else, but there might be.
Some moved.
And again, you go through page seven, we talk about vacancies, recruitment and selection, reducing hours, combining positions and elimination of positions. What I'm trying to do in these provisions is afford the county as broad discretion as I possibly can, when I drafted these things, to exercise the management rights and prerogatives it now has after the budget repair bill. And again, that doesn't mean you have to be unfair, it doesn't mean you have to be mean or nasty or stick it to the employees, but my job as corporation counsel and these other three that assisted in this were to give you the broadest possible discretion to set the policy you wanted to set and give management, whether it's the four of us or department heads, the broadest possible discretion to do what they believe is in the best interest of the county. Any questions on that? Employee compensation, this is purposely vague in terms of salaries and wages. It makes mention to the total base wages, which only applies to represented general municipal employees. Otherwise, the salaries and wages are going to be set forth in a compensation plan that will be established by the county board later on this year. We have, as you know, enlisted an outside consultant, Whipley, to do the study and make recommendations, and those will follow. Overtime and compensatory time, which is paragraph B under 14, is what Maureen was getting at. One of the most significant changes now is the county workforce will be governed strictly by the Fair Labor Standard Act. Before, we had some contractual provisions, which we used to just lively refer to as contractual overtime and the contractual compensatory time. Going forward, we will strictly apply the Fair Labor Standard Act. In the simplest terms, and there are volumes written on the Fair Labor Standard Act, but where it's going to impact our employees the most are the employees that are subject to the Fair Labor Standard Act, which are the non-exempt employees. Under the, most of the collective bargaining agreements, they received overtime anytime they worked in excess of eight hours a day, anytime they worked out inside of their regularly scheduled hours, and anytime they worked on weekends or holidays. Under the Fair Labor Standard Act, with exceptions that aren't pertinent to this discussion, generally, employees are only eligible for overtime after they have actually worked 40 hours in a week. Now, actually worked is an important term because that means you are actually at work on the ground. If you take accrued paid leave, that doesn't count towards your 40-hour limit, and you are only compensated, only entitled to overtime compensation for each hour actually worked over 40 at the rate of one and a half for each hour. With respect to compensatory time off, which is only available in the public sector, by the way, with the prior agreement of the employer and the employee, and again, that will likely take the form of the department head or supervisor agreeing with the employee, the employee can accrue compensatory time off versus cash overtime and then use that accordingly. Compensatory time off, if it's handled correctly, can save the county from paying overtime. The one sticky wicket with compensatory time off is a decision out of Milwaukee County called Nebraska, which basically says that once an employer has allowed an employee to accumulate compensatory time off, they must allow that employee to use it, and unless they're doing so, will substantially disrupt the operations of the business. And what they've excluded from the definition of substantially disrupted is the accumulation of overtime. And what we need to avoid is the use of compensatory time, creating overtime, because then you get caught into the circle where you never get away from employees accumulating overtime. But again, it's a management issue, and we have the ability to address it, and the department heads will receive training on this. And at the end of the day, if we cannot manage compensatory time off, we simply don't have to allow employees to accrue it, and we can pay overtime. What's important about this from the department standpoint and a budgetary standpoint, I think, particularly with the highway department, you're going to make, it's going to be more economical, more efficient from a dollar standpoint, and they're going to be better able because they're going to have more time, more dollars available to provide the services at a lower rate. And for instance, the highway department, which is competing with the private sector, if they can provide their services more efficiently for less dollars, they could be more competitive. So, those are things that we have to keep in mind as we go down this path. Are there any questions on the Fair Labor Standard Act, overtime, compensatory time?
It says total base wages as defined by Wisconsin law. Can you tell us what that definition is?
Briefly, and I will rely on... Briefly, and I will rely on Shirley and/or Kelly, whichever one has studied this. There is an odd formula that you put in, and I believe, don't hold me to this, you take a snapshot in time. That snapshot is taken, Mark, 180 days before the end of the year? For total base wages, 180 days before the end of the year, you take the snapshot in time? So, using a collective bargaining unit, you take the number of employees you have, what you're paying them. The state establishes, or has landmarked its increases to a consumer price index, and you take a snapshot in time, and absent a referendum, that's all that you can give in terms of wages to a represented general municipal employee for the following year. What's important, and we stress this with department heads, is assuming, and I think it's a safe assumption, that they, we will have employees that are represented, that they make sure they are fully staffed, because as I understand the formula, you do not count vacant positions in the formula. And if you happen to have a vacant position, and my assumption is correct, you are going to have, that particular department will have less money in the pot for its employees for the next year. We haven't been through this before, but many other municipalities and counties have. But it's a formula that's set forth in the statute, I believe the Administrative Code, and that's about the most general explanation I can give. I think in 2011, it was just under 3%, and in 2012, it was 2.2%? Okay, was the increase. And what's unique about that, while we're on the subject, is for a particular bargaining unit that represents general municipal employees, the county will have a defined pot of money. The county gets to divide that money up amongst those employees pretty much how it wishes. So, you can have an across-the-board wage increase, you can also set aside part of that for merit increases, and all those issues will be addressed in the compensation plan that's coming down the road. I only give that example because it's one small example of the flexibility we now have. Any other questions?
And it doesn't mean that you need to offer the total base wages. That is still something that's up to the negotiating committee and the full county board. That's just a guideline. It doesn't mean that it's automatically what that total base wage package, as determined by Shirley, do you remember, Department of Revenue or Department of Administration?
Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue will annually set that dollar amount. So, that'll be, if it's 3%, you could say an offer, direct us to do an offer of a percent and a half. So, it doesn't set the, it sets the maximum, not the minimum. And then, of course, your comparables and anything else that goes along with what we've normally done for collective bargaining agreement. But we'll be looking to the negotiating committee, who's made up of Joel Gunlickson, Ken Fisher, Dan, right, Dan, you're on there? Dan Osted and Leo Zipper is the negotiating committee for the county.
Now, moving on to page nine, other elements and forms of compensation. Reference to cost of living adjustments and the fact that that is a potential form of compensation. Moving on to page 10, holiday pay leave, merit pay, on-call time, shift differentials, and standby time. These are all various forms of compensation that will be examined as part of the compensation study and can be implemented by the county. It doesn't mean that they will be, it just leaves the door open by having those in the employee handbook. And we can start with the holiday pay, or excuse me, holiday pay leave as an example of fairness. And I can use the highway department as an example. If we have highway department employees that are plowing the roads eight hours a day on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and then again on New Year's Day, it, and I'll say this publicly, and you can chastise me later, it is manifestly unfair to require that they go out at their regular wage and do that. So, I'm certainly not advocating that they earn overtime, but we can sit down and look at the external comparables and come up with holiday pay or alternatively, additional leave that recognizes the sacrifice of the 24/7 employees that have to be out there on holidays, when the rest of us are at home sitting by a fire or pay Christmas presents. Same thing with number four, on-call time. On-call time is not technically compensable, but again, it's a matter of fairness. Is it fair for somebody to, yes, they are free to come and go as they want, but there are certain things they can't do. One of the examples that we use, which I think is important in Wisconsin, certainly important in my family, if I'm on call and it's New Year's Eve, and I'm sitting down with the family, and you want to have your cocktail and place travel, you can't drink. So, there are limitations on your behavior, so somehow or other, that has to be recognized that somebody is compensated for being on call. And I might reference the fact that we've done that with non-represented employees up till now anyway, so it's not a departure from our standard practice. And the same thing goes with shift differentials. There is a difference if you're working from 7:00 in the morning till 5:00 PM or 5:00 PM till 7:00 AM, and perhaps that should be recognized in terms of shift differentials, where people that have the less favorable shifts get a little bump in pay for each hour of work. Again, it's a matter of fairness, it's not something we have to do, but we've included in here because we've recognized the need to appropriately compensate employees when they're doing things above and beyond what is ordinarily expected. Any questions on any of that? Moving on to employee fringe benefits, this is literally just a laundry list of things that we provide. Health insurance, COBRA, which is a continuation coverage mandated by law, dental insurance, I think it was suggested, and we can certainly look at it, and added to this is the optical vision coverage, and that's something we can discuss with people from the Horton Group. An employee assistance program, which is currently in place and has been in place since March of 2012. Life insurance, which we currently have. G is kind of the big, a significant change for the represented employees. You will remember back in 2006, we moved the non-represented employees from the traditional sick leave bank, where you would have sick leave and vacation time and some other leaves, to a paid time off bank. Paid time off, simply explained, is one bank of accrued paid leave you can use basically for whatever you need. And the employees, and I'm one of those, that was moved from the traditional accrued pay leave, where you had sick and vacation, the PTO in 2007, haven't noticed a difference. In fact, most people end up being able to have more flexibility and to take more time off, because under the old rules, unless you were fibbing, you weren't supposed to use sick leave for anything else but if you're sick. So, if you happen to be healthy, your sick leave would simply sit there and accumulate. The other benefit that we derive from the paid time off is we are striving to eliminate these huge banks of time that people have been allowed to accumulate under the collective bargaining agreement and under the prior system that was in place. And what we are suggesting is we simply adapt or adopt the paid time off policy that was passed in 2006, and move the general municipal employees to that paid time off policy, and address it in the same manner it was addressed in 2006 and 2007, which I think by all accounts has worked out pretty well for the employees, and certainly has been a benefit to the employer, because we sort of drew a line in the sand. What people had earned, they were allowed to retain, but moving forward, we just changed the dynamic and went to the paid time off. There was a lot of trepidation about that back then, and I suspect there'll be some trepidation moving forward, but hopefully, because we've done it before, and the department heads that will be explaining this to their employees have gone through it themselves, that that trepidation could be lessened. Holidays, we're just identifying the holidays we're going to recognize.
There is a change in that.
There is a change in that, and we no longer have New Year's Eve. But it's not that we're with takeaway.
Or the Friday.
Or the, yeah, the spring holiday.
Easter, yes.
If you remember, there was a decision that said that public sector employees could not recognize Good Friday anymore, so we all said we had a spring holiday that just happened to fall on Good Friday. Simplest thing was to get rid of it, but we added one personal holiday, so there's no net loss from what we had under our policies and procedures. H, unpaid leave of absence. This just recognizes the reality that I may be, an employee may be in a situation where they've used all their paid time off, and they have no more accrued paid leave, and it's sort of a safety valve with some limits. And it talks about in there, the Family Medical Leave Act, there's both state and federal leave. We also have had situations where employees have utilized all the unpaid leave that's available to them under the state and federal FMLA, and we just wanted, what we've included in here is an ability for the employee to come forward and request additional unpaid time off if they get themselves in those sorts of situations where they simply have no more paid leave, have no more unpaid leave, but they need more time off. So, one of the important things I think we put in here that was spoken, but perhaps not enforced, is if somebody's out on an unpaid leave of absence, we don't want them engaging in secondary outside or self-employment, or while they're on light duty or during a leave of absence. In theory, if you're on an unpaid leave of absence, it's because you're unable to work for some reason. It's not because, you know, I make more money during the winter months plowing people's driveways than I do working in the Corporation Counsel's office, so I'm going to take an unpaid leave of absence to go plow driveways. We haven't had that situation, but we're trying to address everything we can think of in here.
And that would not apply towards a layoff?
No, no. No, once we lay people off, they're pretty much free to do what they wish on their free time.
Is that great?
Yes.
Where does maternity come in here, returning leave?
That is one of the required leaves under the Family Medical Leave Act, both under the state and federal rules, and it's, both, the leave is allowed for both parents, it's allowed in the case of an adoption, and Kelly.
Foster children.
Foster children, so it's encompassed under the Family Medical Leave Act under 2A.
And remember, because we're an employer with more than 50 employees, a lot of these rules are mandatory for us. That's the magic number. You're going to hear a lot more about 50 employees with regard not only to some of these federal laws like maternity leave, but also some of the health insurance issues that are going to come before us. We can't reduce ourselves down to 49 employees and still do everything that we're doing, even if we wanted to. We're at 350 roughly, give or take. On occasion, we have as many as 500 employees on our payroll, but 50 seems to be a magic number with regard to all of the federal laws. Right, Grant?
Absolutely, and they've done a good job in anticipating what employers might try to do to get out from underneath these federal laws, so.
Yeah.
The next three, retirement, controlled by the Wisconsin Retirement System, unemployment insurance is governed by statute, as well as workers' compensation. One of the changes in workers' compensation, under each of the collective bargaining agreements that are in place, if I'm not mistaken, is a provision that we actually pay employees their wage, and in return, they give us their workers' compensation. That's going to change going forward. What we're recommending is that an employee that is on temporary, is out, and they're temporarily out, that they will receive the workers' compensation benefits they're entitled to, but not their full wages. I can go into a long explanation as to why that is the case, but the simple fact is that in some instances, employees need encouragement to come back when they're out on workers' compensation. And when they're receiving their full wage, that's not much of an incentive to come back, and the workers' compensation system was designed to fairly compensate somebody, but also to kind of steer him, to get him or her to get back to work as soon as is feasible.
So, they may be taking home 2/3 of their pay when they're on workers' compensation as opposed to 100%. So, again, with our labor contracts, we pay, we allow the employee to pay, to receive their full salary instead of the 2/3, that's the state law.
Moving on to the top of page 13, disciplining grievance procedure. In response to the Budget Repair Bill back in September of 2011.
I think there might be some question, hang on.
Yeah.
I was asking, if I had heard what you had said, right, you were confirming, you said 100% instead of 80?
Instead of about 2/3, 66% roughly, 2/3, did I say? I said that right, yes. 2/3 is the state law, under the, all of our labor agreements require us to make the employee 100% whole, so.
So, that's going forward, or that's going to change?
Going to change. Effective January 1, 2014, those without a collective bargaining agreement would be subject to the state law, which is the 66, roughly, 2/3.
That doesn't sound as bad as it is, because the workers' compensation payments are not taxed the same way wages are, so.
Right.
It's not quite a wash, but it's pretty close. Disciplining grievance procedure, we were required and did in fact in September of 2011, pass a grievance system, which is set forth in the Resolution Number 201175, and that is going to be the disciplining grievance procedure moving forward. It's relatively limited in scope to cases of discipline or discharge and workplace safety issues, so. And then, we kind of get into the catch-all paragraph on page 13, miscellaneous rules and working conditions. And it really is simply common sense stuff that had never been written down before, and for lack of a better word, we've tried to anticipate and everything that might be an issue here that we need to address. First one is absences and lack of punctuality. You know, you need to come to work, and you need to come to work on time unless you have good reason. Alcohol and other drugs, unless it's a prescription drug, we have a alcohol and drug-free workplace and adopted a policy back in May of 2012 indicating such, and that's what we're going to follow. We've outlined the alcohol and drug screening or testing that may occur, and that'll be worked out in more detail in the administrative manual. C, appearance and demeanor, it's not a dress code, it's just, we want people to be dressed appropriate to their job functions and performance standards. And very simple statement, that the employees are expected to treat others with courtesy and respect. In regard to the appearance not being a dress code, using myself as an example, I can't come to work in a t-shirt and shorts, even if they're nice t-shirts and shorts, because it's not appropriate for what I do for a living. On the other hand, if I were working the paving machine at the highway department, I shouldn't dress in a suit. It's just, again, a common sense thing, we're not trying to control people's lives, but it's just a way of saying that dress appropriately for what you're going to do. Assignment of work, again, we're trying to retain as much latitude with the county as we possibly can. Breaks and meal period are identical to what is currently the case, 30 minutes for each eight hours of work in terms of the meal period, and one 10-minute rest break for each four hours of work. And that's right out of our current policy and procedures manual. F, certification and licensure. We have employees and occupations that are regulated by the state or federal government, I can use myself as an example, is I have to have a license to practice law. I brought that to the table and obviously paid for it myself. But we also need to accumulate credits, 30 credits every two years. Those are called continuing legal education requirements. Up till this point, the county has been kind enough to fund that. We do our best in our department to attend the free conferences, and there are plenty of them, and we don't have a big budget item for that. And I think that's the case in all the departments, and we would expect that that would continue. Under some of the collective bargaining agreements, the employees had far more discretion in deciding what programs they wanted to go to and where they wanted to go. So, it's more of a return to the balance where the employer's going to be, the county's going to be reasonable. Again, that's going to fall under the guidance of the department heads, who are going to have to make sure that their budget reflects what they want to do for training, for certification and licensure, and the employer's going to continue to pay for that if it's reasonable, but it gives the employer the discretion, the county discretion, to say no. Paragraph G, confidential and private information, again, common sense, stuff you know about, you hear, you read about, that is confidential and private, has to remain confidential and private. H, HIPAA and the high-tech. H, HIPAA in the High Tech Act, that's federal law, deals with personally identifiable health information. That has been off limits since 2009 and even before. It's really nothing different than what we've always been operating under. Conflicts of interest, the same thing. We are governed in Wisconsin as public employees by statutes, I've cited the statutes in here, and put in what I think is a fairly simple definition of conflict of interest, and that's where employees outside activities or interests negatively affect the employer, and employees just need to avoid placing themselves in that situation. It's sort of like the Supreme Court definition of pornography, you know it when you see it, but you can't give a good definition of it. And we all have that little voice in the side of our head that, when you get yourself in a situation, I, that says, I really ought not be doing this, and we just have to listen to that voice and walk away when we get in those situations. Promotions or demotions, this will tie into the compensation study, and we thought that it was appropriate to put a provision in there that allowed people who were top performers to distinguish themselves, to get promotions, and also a provision that people that weren't top performers and weren't doing what they needed to do to stay on top of things within, in their profession or their chosen field of work, to be demoted. And it's set in here in general terms, and it's something we're going to have to address in the administrative manual through the compensation study. Okay, honesty, again, tell the truth, and we expect our employees to be honest and trustworthy. If you're not, you're likely not going to be here anymore. It's as simple as that. And I give an example, I don't know if it's the best example, we went through a few examples that, some of mine that might have been fun were next by the group, but.
Override them.
With good reason. Dual employment, we have had some situations in the past that caused us some issue under both the Fair Labor Standard Act and otherwise, where we have an employee working in one department and then another department, and not keeping track of hours, and if you exceed the overtime limit in those two departments, they're combined, you have to pay that employee overtime. We have employees that in one aspect might be exempt from the Fair Labor Standard Act, and so they would never accrue overtime or compensatory time. Then in another function within the county, they do, and there's a complicated formula, so, and we just, we're not foreclosing it, it's just the county needs to know about it, and Shirley and Kelly need to be able to account for it, so that we don't inadvertently get ourselves into a situation where somebody is accruing overtime when they need not or should not. Emergency closures, this is a slightly revised statement of what we currently have, and again, it's common sense. We are not holding a gun to anybody's head saying, you have to come to work in the snowstorm or in this tornado or whatever. What we're saying is use common sense. History tells us that the times that the county actually sets down its operations are few and far between. It's happened, what, maybe three times in my tenure here, which is almost 20 years? But also, if somebody, if I call in and say, I can't make it up from Green Bay today, the snow is just too deep, you call in, you let somebody know you're not coming in, if you have accrued paid leave, you use it, if you don't, you have an unpaid day off. And it's as simple as that. And most of these rules that we have put in the employee handbook are just common sense things. Moving on to page 16, employees' rules of conduct and performance standards. They're general statements, things that we will flesh out a bit in the administrative manual in terms of the performance standards, because they're going to vary department by department, job to job. The general rules of conduct, I've put a general definition in there with some very broad definitions of things that you ought not do, that you probably don't need to put in here, but the world we live in, you sort of have to, to give people examples of what they shouldn't do, and that includes violent stealing, destruction of property, insubordination, inappropriate behavior towards coworkers, clients or members of the public, misuse of the Internet or email, and violation of safety rules. Employee training and organizational development, it struck us when we went through the handbook or the current policies and procedures and collective bargaining agreements, that we really don't have any program internally to train people that want to move from the line worker into the supervisory role. What we have done, and this is a sort of a shame-on-us proposition over the years, is you elevate somebody from a non-supervisory role into a supervisory role, and sometimes into head of department head, and it's not that he or she doesn't have the ability to do it, it's just they've never had the training and the guidance to enable them to do it. And what we've done here is at least opened the door to evaluate internally those folks who we might see moving up within the organization to a management position, and trying to get a vehicle in place where we can get those employees to training, to develop their talent, and put a fail-safe, because I knew that would be a concern, as did the other three members of the team, that if we provide you with this training and development, and you go to work for Brown County, within a year of completing your training, you're going to reimburse us for the cost of the training. You know, I honestly think if people have the choice to work in Door County, and they've been here for a long time, and we afford them that opportunity, and they get a management position at Door County, they aren't going to go anywhere else, because we're giving those people the opportunity internally. There are also folks, there are employees that are perfectly happy doing what they do, they have no aspirations to move up to be a supervisor or manager, and if that's the case, you sort of make a mutual decision, we're not going to provide you the training to move up, because you don't want to move up, and if you don't want to move up, we don't want to elevate you to those positions, so. Again, sort of a common sense approach. Employee performance evaluation and review, that will also, and you'll get tired of hearing me say this, be part of the compensation study. I believe that the compensation plan is going to be part, is going to be more based on merit, it's not going to be based entirely or maybe at all on a cost of living increase, and we have to have an objective means of evaluating employee performance if we're going to have a merit-based compensation system. That's all there is to it. The current system is fine as far as it goes, within the limits of what we're doing with our comp plan, but it needs to be revamped, and we just mention it here in passing. Employee recognition reward, we do that from time to time, but it also struck the four of us, and when I say the four of us, I also mean the department heads, that usually people don't get recognized and rewarded unless they've hit certain landmarks, 10 years, 15 years, or your retirement. I know from previous experience in the private sector, as does many of the other people who are involved with this, that just during the course of the year, if you've been given an assignment and done a particularly good job in assignment, maybe a $20 gift certificate to the Glass Coffee House goes a lot way to building, you know, a good relationship between the employer and the employee. The employee feels good about themselves, the supervisor, department heads that can hand out these rewards or recognitions feel good about it, and it just helps to create a team atmosphere. We've not done that before, we've provided for that here, it's just not fully fleshed out the details. Dan?
Are we going to be able to finish, or do we have to recess?
No, we'll be able to, what time you have to leave?
No.
No?
No.
Well, it's up to you, do you want me to prattle on?
How long will it take?
We're just going to leave, and you can keep on talking.
But if you get a motion.
I probably should recess till.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, we're not only about halfway through, and.
Okay, recess till, what, 2:00?
It's up to the chairman.
Chair first.
We'll recess till 2:00. And if you're, if it extends beyond 2:00, recess till you get back from the Door County Economic Development.
If we're not coming back.
What?
Somebody's heading north after that.
2:00.
Two people.
It's like a personal problem.
What time you have?
Three of us are heading north.
11:30.
So recess, come back after the Door County Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you.
So 2:00?
Who else goes?